Why don't I have any sound, Bill?
Why don't you have sound?
Are you muted? Because you want to be muted if you.
Jim, I have a span for you here. You're muted.
Hi.
I'll pick it up in the morning.
Hi, Linda and Anthony.
There's Linda and Anthony.
Oh, maybe they're here. Oh, look, we have to do that. Now we see everyone.
There's Linda and Anthony. I gotta see you on a meeting. I can't see you down the block from me.
All right, we'll call the joints, okay? Are you in Brooklyn?
I'm in Brooklyn. I said, I gotta see you on a meeting. I can't see you down the block from me.
Oh, Tony.
Iris.
There's Mary.
Mary.
There's Iris.
This is so fun.
There's Tim. So this meeting is about the crime that's happening, right? Are we in the right meeting?
Yes, but this is a town board meeting.
Oh, okay.
We're on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
We're new business.
Okay. So I like to hear Iris.
Hi, Cass.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for September 8th, 2020. Could please join me in the pledge to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have Bruce here, right?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Jane's not here right now. She is across the street at the UDC for doing some grant work. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. We've done the pledge. Two announcements, two correspondence. The first is from the New York State DOT, and I don't believe Jill that you've gotten this yet.
Yes, I did. I received it.
Okay. Reference the intersection concern, New York State Route 97 and New York State Route 52 for the town of Tustin Sullivan County. This serves as a response to our letter to you dated January 3rd, 2020. The Traffic Safety and Mobility Office, the TSMO, has completed the review of your concerns. The TSMO reviewed crashes over the most recent three-year period and determined that there were three accidents in that span that involved the driver not stopping at the New York State Route 52 stop sign. The crash rate is consistent with similar roadways. There are existing traffic safety devices in place to alert a westbound New York State Route 52 driver of the stop location and intersection. These signs include, in order, a stop ahead sign, yellow T-intersection warning sign, pavement markings, and a stop sign. To put further emphasis on the stop location, the pavement markings at the stop location will be repainted in a yellow double arrow warning sign will be installed across from the intersection. Any questions, please feel regard contact me at M. R. Cukas 607-721-8073, Regional Traffic Engineer. The second correspondence is from Sullivan County Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board. Reference a New York State Agriculture District 30-day window. Dear Supervisor, the Sullivan County Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board received one request for inclusion into the New York State Agriculture District from a town of Tustin landowner. Below is the landowner and property information for the request. JP Lang, County Route 23, Narrowsburg, New York, Tustin, SBL 20 dash 20 dot dash one dash 27 dot three. The Sullivan County Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board will review this application for inclusion at their meeting on September 10. From there, we will make a recommendation to the county legislature and anticipate a public hearing to be scheduled for November of 2020. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns regarding this application. Linda Meadow, Agriculture Food Service Issue Leader, Staff Support for Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board. There is no presentation this evening. I've just read your two correspondence for our payment of bills, August of 2020. The general account dispersed $99,277.22. The highway dispersed $52,932.9. Water, $40,952.21. Sewer, $4,302.10. The lighting district, $748.48, for a total of $234,212.10. There are two late bills that are included with this. One is Alliance Electric for $56,525, which is the generators, and the other is Glen Sensen for $3,200 for the mowing. They were in there. They are included in the total. I spoke with Jane. She had no questions regarding that. Jill, any questions regarding the bills?
Nope, not at all.
I would make a motion that we pay the bills as presented.
I second that.
I got a second from Jill. I'm an I. Jill?
Hi.
And Bruce?
Hi.
Thank you. Division reports. Highway used 800 gallons of diesel, 765 gallons for highway, and 34 was for non-highway. 216 gallons of gas, three was for highway, and 212 was nine highway use. Patched holes on dirt and paved roads, stockpiled sand for the winter, mowed the right-of-ways along roads. Chip sealed the Gables Road, the Shaw Road, Wood Oak Drive, Arena Court, and Hemlock Lane with Sukoe paving. Replaced pipes on Blind Pond Road, Perry Road, and Irish Town Road. They ditched Irish Town Road, Keshkin Turnpike, Nova Strunk Road, and Humphrey Road. They helped the towns of Keshkin, Delaware, Island, Forestburg, and Lumberland with their chip seal projects. The water and sewer division report. We cleaned stones around the distribution boxes and stand bed number one. They dug up 13 septic tanks for Kovaland to pump out. Maintained sand beds by burning weeds, removing sludge and raking sand. Completed the monthly drinking water and wastewater sampling and reporting. Replaced a broken valve for sand bed number two with the sewer treatment plant. Located nine valves at the sewer treatment plant. Cleaned out the valve boxes from dirt and installed risers. Installed 10-valve box risers on Second Avenue and School Street and one manhole cover riser. Installed a 12-inch concrete septic tank riser on Erie Avenue. They exercised the generators. They fixed broken handbrake on a zero turn. They replaced stone driveway. The stone driveway in the tractor shed. They mowed it well. Houses and sewer treatment plant flushed dead-end water line on Hickory Lane. Fixed four septic tank inspection ports. They received a new Ram 3500 utility truck. They moved tools and equipment from the Ford 250 to the Ram 3500 and prepared the F-250 for pickup for auction. The Building Department and Code Enforcement had 17 construction inspections, two certificate occurrences, eight certificate of compliance, 10 building permits, three accessory building and garages, one for renovation alteration addition, one deck, one demolition permit, one electrical permit, one mechanical, one septic permit, one sign permit, 18 C of O and violation searches. And money is collected by the office from August 1 to August 31, or $3,020. There is no assessors' report for this meeting. Susan, are you here for the Upper Delaware Council?
She's probably with Jane over at the UDC.
Good point. I think I would have known that. The UDC met at the Narrowsburg Union's Delaware Hall, which allowed for social distancing. Some members used the call-in option. Presentation was given by the DEC biologist Kevin Clark, who reported on the Mongo Valley Wildlife Management Area. National Park Service personnel changes. Acting Superintendent Darren Bosch stated that the search for the position of community land use planner has been closed, and an offer being made to their chosen candidate. Darren also expects that the position of park superintendent will be filled in October as well, which is when his time here is over. Additional protection for historic bridges. Darren announced that the Tustin Stone Arch Bridge, the Skinner's Falls Bridge, and the Hankins Creek Stone Arch Bridge have been added to the Upper Delaware Scenic Recreational River, outstandingly remarkable cultural values, which offers these striations enhanced protections. Overuse of river accesses. The MPS data for visitation supports what we already know, which is that we are experiencing huge numbers of additional visitors this year. The data does not include Labor Day. For example, Skinner's Falls, 2019, 11,714 visitors. This year in 2020, 22,610 visitors. Apparently, the numbers do not translate into additional funding for trash policing, et cetera. Bill Rudge from the DEC reported that all DEC sites have had the same experience this summer. The usual strategy is to limit parking, which hasn't been working well this summer. There's a committee working on increasing parking at the Mongo Access and Lumberland since parking along Route 97 is hazardous. UDC has a five-year strategic planning retreat that will be held at the Narrowsburg Union on Saturday, October 3rd, from 9 to 4. After work that morning, you can't get there until 2:00, so looking for someone to represent the town in that morning. I am on the steering committee and will be submitting items for the agenda based on previous UDC discussions about what is important to us. Anyone who feels strongly about the direction the UDC will take over the next five years should get in touch with me. The event is by invitation only. On the tag grants, Tustin will be awarded $10,000 for Phase 1 of the comprehensive plan. Jane has submitted an application for 2021 for Phase 2, which is being reviewed tonight, the UDC's annual Project River Tag Meeting. Other upcoming events, Friends of the Upper Delaware River Water, Everywhere Virtual Conferences happening October 14th. For details, get in touch with Futter. Not weed control presentation at 7:00 PM at the beginning of the UDC's monthly meeting at the Narrowsburg Union. The Energy Committee report.
I have that. Okay, the TEC Horse Meeting was on August 20th. In attendance was Brandy Marolla, Jennifer Porter, Scott Porter, Coriann Mansell, Naomi Hollis, and Catherine Lewis. October 10th is the horse shipment date from Seattle. No exact delivery date yet to Tustin. September 26th, the TEC will set up an information tent at the Union Farmers Market. Liars will be available to those interested in learning about the horse food digester. Ribbon cutting for the horse will be around Halloween. Date to be determined. Invited to attend will be Senator Jen Metzger, the TEC, participating Tustin restaurants and food merchants, Supervisor Ben Johnson, the press, and more. The DEC wants to send a representative to show their support after awarding us the fully funded grant for this project. All attending will require to wear masks and to socially distance. We will also livestream on the TEC Facebook page. TEC is designing an invite and writing a press release. The Sullivan Waste Reduction Alliance meeting. In attendance, Brandy Marolla, Bill Cutler, Heather Brown of Sullivan County Waste Management, Mary Page from Ethelbert, the Crawford Library. Brandy gave it a comprehensive summary of the Tustin Horse Project, as well as the Tustin LED Streetlight Project. The New York State Plastic Bad, Plastic Bad Ban was upheld and made even more specific. The county is seeing a great reduction of plastic in trees, waterways, and on land. Brandy gave a summary of the Trex Soft Plastic Recycling Program. Monticello is now part of the Trex Initiative following Tustin's success. Bill Cutler spoke about recycling transfer stations, sorting, and the differences in plastics. Because we have a huge influx of new residents since the pandemic began, Bill wants the county and towns to educate newcomers about proper waste disposal, including medication drop-offs. Heather Brown has seen a drastic reduction in state monies for the waste management due to COVID, but she is applying for as many grants as she can, forging forward. TEC Horse Meeting, September 3rd. Intendence, Brandy, Jennifer, Scott, Coriann, Starr Hesse, Naomi Hollis, and Catherine Lewis. Ben is having two railroad ties made by Kevin Frieda to support the horse on the ground. He is also, he's also spoken with the electricians to connect the horse to the existing electric panel. Participating businesses, Tustin businesses, being trained in food scrap collection are the Blue Fox, Gerard's, well, it's not Gerard's anymore, but oh, yeah, that's the other Gerard's. The Laundrette Pete's Market, the Heron Two Queens, and the Food Pantry. I was thinking about the corner shop. Brandy has picked up 40-plus food-grade buckets for collection to be given to food merchants. They have been donated by Weiss Market in Homestead. She has adhered, she has adhered stickers on the buckets labeling them as food scrap collection vessels for the horse. Our end project of probiotic plant food is of interest to several local parties to purchase in the future. LED streetlights. After eight years, Tustin is very close to realizing all-new town-owned LED streetlights throughout the town. Ben, Brandy, and Nipo will be having a final design meeting to confirm all the lighting decisions for Tustin's streetlights on September 10. Following that meeting, all materials, including fixtures and bulbs, will be ordered. Delivery time should be 10 weeks, and installation will take one week. Trex Soft Plastic Waste. Tustin has collected 500 pounds in August, yielding a third free bench from Trex. This bench will go in front of the library. To date, after one year, Tustin has collected 4,988 pounds. And for those of you not familiar with that, Trex would like towns to collect 500 pounds in six months, and we have collected 5,000 pounds in one year. And every, every quarter, they will give you a bench with raising, collecting 500 pounds. There are a number of places in town to put your soft plastic, including the Union, Pete's Market, the post office, I think, and, and Narrowsburg proper, any place else right now. There were a couple others, but until COVID. If you want more information, you can reach out to Brandy or me, or look at the signage on these bins and help us get more batches and recycle, reduce, reuse, recycle.
Thank you, Jill.
Yep.
There's no zoning rewrite committee report under grants to Little Lake Erie Culvert Project. Moving along, we're securing proper right-of-ways on the properties that will be used for the temporary bridge. Water PR with Delaware Engineering. This is the water project. An archaeological survey is in the process of being conducted. The next step will go to schedule a public hearing. The usual New York State grant cycle has not been announced at this time. Speculations that the current New York financials do not support the usual grants programs. In the meantime, we continue to seek alternative funding sources for our upgrade project. Sullivan Renaissance, we're not awarded the Golden Feather Grant. There was only one Golden Feather recipient. The town of Fallsburg won that. The Upper Delaware Council, the final reports for the 2019, 2020 zoning rewrite and the comprehensive plan were submitted on time. The 2021 grant request for Part 2 of the comprehensive plan was also submitted. At this time, we will open the public comment for 10 minutes directed to the board pertaining to our agenda items. Iris? Iris?
Hi, a quick question, because I can see the new items on the agenda. Are we on the agenda for new business?
I've got you as number six for the Flat Neighborhood Watch.
Then I will hold comment.
I have a more generic question for Ben. Since you are down a member, are there plans to replace Brandy on the board? And if so, is there a timeframe for doing that?
Yes, we want to replace Brandy on the board. There's not a timeframe for doing it. We have two people that have approached the board at this point.
Good, thanks.
Wanda? Still there? No? Trying to get you in, Wanda.
Testing, testing.
Okay, you're in, Wanda.
Okay, so the Narrowsburg beautification group would like to have their garden swap October 3rd or the 17th, if the parking lot's not being used. We spread out in the springtime, and it really seemed to work well across the whole railroad edge of the parking lot.
I'm sorry. Please check in your dates right now, I believe, Wanda. October 3rd or 17th?
Preferably the 3rd. People can get things in the ground still.
Yeah, she's got nothing on the 3rd, if you want to do it on the 3rd, Wanda.
Sweet, I can start my campaign then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, we're going to move into old business. Number one under old business is a Narrowsburg Water Improvement Project for the public hearing. We're still not ready to make that public hearing. They're not done with the archaeological digs, so that will remain the same.
Ben? It's Juliette.
Yes, Juliette.
Is it the right time for me to make the public comments on the correspondence I sent regarding the number-one law of 2020?
Okay, local law number one. We can either do it now, or we can do it at the closing comments. Whichever one you want.
Happy to do it now if it's fine with everybody.
Yeah, sure.
That's very nice.
You got my return back.
I did your return, and I appreciate it. Thank you. So I contacted the
New York State DOT?
The planning, Sullivan County planning to get actually the planning to get the double checking on the measurements.
Okay.
Because it's part of what's concerning us, right? And I think we definitely have something, I think we could look in, in order to organize parking and being able to have some parking. The compact measurement for a vehicle is actually down to seven feet. However, we have a variation of measurement between sidewalk, between the curve, between the, the, the space on the road as well. So it's not a forward thing, as we know. It's obvious, and you've already done some work and assessed it in person, I believe. But I think what I really, what I really want to emphasize is there is that as much as the safety is capital, I think we can turn our eyes away from the speeding that we're creating by giving a highway feeling to Bridge Street. It's already an interstate road, and I would really like the board to consider how we can make sure that we're keeping people from speeding. It's like a complete reality, and this is why the county has also made that recommendation and offered help to the town to achieve safety. And I think there is, I mean, the fact that parking is capital for operating businesses on Bridge Street and on Main Street is obvious, but I think I need to say it. It's, it's capital to my business to be able to have parking, even if it's few spots. It's proven, then if you just like fly down a highway, or if you increase the perception of wideness, then speeding is going to occur. People don't slow down. It's dangerous. It doesn't offer the buffer to the
It is, but allowing parking that is in less than the size that is required. What you're now doing is, in an attempt to slow down speeders, is you're creating an illegal parking situation, and you're creating more of a hazard. I understand, you know, what you were saying as far as with planning, they do have these, these projects in order to reduce traffic flow or speed by using the parking on the side because it causes people to slow down. But if you've got only six feet of parking where you should have seven and a half or eight feet, now you're creating a situation where you're narrowing the road so much that you're slowing the cars down, but you're also having an issue with the fact that on both sides of the road, you're going to end up with illegally parked cars. If you want, we can look at it. I will speak with you with what the county said. We can find a spot where one or two cars come in. That's fine. We can do that, or three cars. But until then, it's going to stay no parking until we can, you know, address it. Like the pictures you showed me where you had your vehicle parked, your vehicle's a six-foot-wide vehicle. That vehicle was just barely inside the lines. Six foot is not a normal vehicle anymore. Most of them are seven feet. You know, some of them are even larger. So we can't put parking up, even if we put in what they consider smaller parking spots for compact cars. Now you end up with somebody that's trying to park in a compact spot that doesn't belong there, and we've recreated the situation that we've had on Main or on Bridge Street. You know, much like Friday. I mean, you know, the complaints Friday about the, the parking on both sides of Bridge Street. You know, that will happen when you have events. We understand that, but we can't encourage it to happen every single day and be part of creating an illegal parking situation. But yes, I will speak with you. If you want to bring to me what the planning department said, absolutely, we can look at that.
Thank you for your consideration, and I'll follow up with you on that regard. And thank you, Jill, for your reply and your interest in considering the public parking signage at the library, as well as the speed bump or the slower bump potential as well.
Apparently, the speed bump is, because it's an interstate road, it's not legal. Although I would love a speed bumps on Kirk's Road because people go crazy down my road as well. So I get your, I get your point, but it's not, it's not something that's going to happen.
I think the county actually brought to my attention that we could consider a bump raised, which is a little broader, and I'm not functioning exactly as speed bump, but I'm happy to discuss that at another time and in another chain of conversation to be a little bit more thorough about it.
If it's legal, I'd love to see it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jane, are you hooked in?
My mind?
Are you hooked in? We're still not ready for a public hearing, correct, on the water project?
I have not heard back from them. So, well, I think we have to wait for the archeological survey, and that's still in process.
We will move into new business under number one for new business, the budget workshop.
Ben, did you do grants under?
I did. I read your report.
May I just give you an update from across the street? I was just presenting our request to the UDC to fund the second part of the, the comp plan. And we were asking for $10,000. There are three applicants for grants, and the UDC said that the total requests from the three applicants is $42,000, and we requested $10,000. So it's not likely that we'll get our total requests, but just to let you know that update, they'll let us know whenever, pretty, pretty quickly, but that's where that stood. That's why I was late.
Board for budget workshops, do we have, I think Brucey and Jill, probably days that are going to work best for you. Set up maybe two different budget workshops? Or maybe one this month and one next month?
I, just so you know, I have my son's wedding in a week and a half. I'm going to be out of town, and then we have an event here. I, just so you know, I have my son's wedding in a week and a half. I'm going to be out of town and then we have an event here two weeks later. So until after October 4th, don't count on me. I just
Okay, so why don't, why don't we use October 4th as a you know, pick a date after October 4th that works for you?
Fridays, if it's daytime, Fridays, evenings, except for Thursday are pretty good.
Bruce, what works best for you?
Oh, daytime. Evening's the only thing I have.
Okay. We could do those here at the town hall. Preference on time?
6:30, 7 o'clock.
Seven work, Bruce?
Yeah.
Why don't we just set one for right now and we'll do that October 5th? Jane, we're not going to be in the comprehensive plan by then, are we?
I, I don't, well, we could be, but we can make it so that we're not.
Or the 6th?
Yeah, the 6th or after because my son is leaving on the 6th and, you know.
Okay, why don't we use the 6th? We'll do, we'll set 6th October because that's supposed to be a work session anyway. So we'll leave it. We'll leave it as it's already on the agenda for a meeting. So we'll do October 6th at 7 o'clock.
And that'll be in town hall.
Yeah, we'll do that in town hall. Number two on new business, the fall municipal cleanup. We received a letter from Sullivan County Treasurers Department, reference municipal cleanup 2020. In accordance with the municipal agreement between the county of Sullivan and the town of Tustin, your allotment for 2020 was 25 tons. To date, you have used 21.4 or 5 tons, leaving us with 3.5 tons available for the fall. That 25 tons was our spring cleanup. I don't believe we've got enough to do a fall cleanup without having to pay for it. I would recommend not doing the fall cleanup. I know a lot of people look forward to it, but at this point in time with only three tons, we look to be paying for eight or 10 tons of trash. Any board comment on that?
Hopefully everybody got rid of their stuff in the spring because they had time.
Well, they certainly have the time to do it.
Do we traditionally have as many people come for fall as we do for spring?
Usually, and I would say with the, the current situation would
Be more.
Oh, yes. We'll have lots. All right. And I think that's a reasonable recommendation.
Number three, our 911 memorial dedication service. This Friday, September 11th at 5 o'clock PM. Ed Jackson, our planning board chairman, probably a decade ago, received a piece of steel from the 911 foundation. And with the help of, under the direction of Brandy Marolla, she got Lurch and Nico to create a monument down at our veterans park. And at 5 o'clock this Friday, the 11th, we're going to have a dedication ceremony for it to be the first one. So everyone is encouraged to come out socially distanced and see the monument and be part of the dedication. Number four, we'll throw this at the building committee as far as getting quotes for painting and gutters for the work after the roof is complete.
When are they starting on the roof?
I think anytime now. I put a call into Blair today, but I did not get a call back from them. But they estimate that it'll take about a week. So I think probably with the painting and the gutter replacement, we can do that is quotes with the procurement policy.
Just stay away.
I'm sorry. Number five, the town of Tustin needs to update the town of Tustin retention and disposition schedule for the New York local government records, the LGS1 issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records. So be resolved by the Tustin Town Board and the town of Tustin retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of value of this record listed therein. Further resolved in accordance with Article 57A, sub A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. In subsection B, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond the established legal minimum periods. I would put that in the form of a motion. Any questions?
Do we have a schedule of the retention periods? They're online now. Okay, I would just hope that when we are getting ready to dispose of anything, that maybe we could call the Historical Society and just see if there's something that they think, you mentioned that anyway, of historical value. Okay.
I've got it. Motion a second?
Second.
A second from Jill. Bruce?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. On number six, the Neighborhood Watch, Iris, and I believe Greg is also here.
Yes, I believe Greg is here too. Can you hear me? Hello? Okay. Good evening. You know, my name is Iris Hellfield and I'm a resident of the Flats. What I would like to do is give you an overview of our perceptions of what is going on in the Flats. But before I go into that, what I would like to mention is that many of us have joined together and there are now over 45 members and it's rising. And we have become part of the Flats Neighborhood Watch community. I would like all of the people who are on the Zoom tonight or on, well, I don't know if you can do it on phones, raise their hands so that you, the board can see how many members are present at tonight's meeting. Okay, so here are some of the issues. There is a vacant house that has been broken into, it seems like several times. Appliances have been stolen. It has been vandalized. There are graffiti on the walls. There is, I'm just going to do bullets. There is increased use of drugs in the multi-generational park at the end of Delaware Drive in the turnaround, in the parking lot near the medical building, and the vacant lot to the left of Hector's Garage on Delaware Drive. Needles have been found, condoms, beer cans, liquor bottles, and waste have been found in those areas. And as of last night, several properties have been vandalized by being egged. Additionally, vehicles are speeding through sections of the neighborhood, sometimes so aggressively. People mentioned having to jump out of the way or pull others to safety to avoid being hit. We have children and pets that do not have that same ability to jump out of the way. Police have approached drivers on some of these, of some of these parked vehicles to remove these vehicles. If they do leave, they return very quickly. Additionally, many trucks and other vehicles with New York, Pennsylvania, and other plates have been perusing the neighborhood and taking photos. And these are not real estate photos. There have been two or more arrests and we wanted to know were any of these arrests related to any of the above issues that I just mentioned? We are certainly most appreciative of the increase in police coverage, especially in the Flats. How long will this coverage last or continue? It cannot be the end-all and the be-all. We need additional new tools in the toolbox along with the police coverage to eliminate these problems. After several meetings with homeowners and long-term renters of the Flats in the multiple generational park, here are some of the suggestions and thoughts that we have been presented. One, there is a need for a town no loitering ordinance so that cars, trucks, groups who are in fact loitering can be issued as summonings and fined. And it is necessary to put no loitering signs in place so they are visible. I understand, we understand that we do not want additional signage, but this is a very critical issue that we are dealing with. And once we eliminate the issue, we can eliminate the signs. Next, there is a necessity to change the speed limit. We believe there is a necessity to change the speed limit to 25 miles per hour in town and in the Flats. Also, installation of seasonal speed bumps in the Flats to prevent some of the speeding that is going on and some of the four-wheelers, et cetera. Additionally, motion lights and cameras need to be placed. Greg Triggs will discuss this as he has done the research. But before I turn this over to Greg, I would like to suggest to the board that we have either a breakout session or a recess meeting to further develop our goals of eliminating the problems and return our community to the safe place it has been in the past. Thank you.
I'll just jump in. Hello, everybody. Thank you, Iris. I did get a chance to do some research and we feel from our meetings that we've been having that one of the issues is the park especially, and several other areas in the Flats are just large, dark congregating areas for things that can happen after dark. So I've done some research on cameras and motion detector lights that work hand in hand to give coverage to the park, the medical building that is currently empty as you enter the Flats and the turnaround at the end of Delaware Drive. And we feel like those would all be great enhancements for the increased police patrolling that we've seen. And indeed, based on the research I've done, we would have a follow-up that would give the police another tool for when they have had to intervene with people that have been asked to move on but may come back five minutes later. The lights that I found are very reasonably priced, very high ratings online. And they are both motion detectors, night vision cameras, and regular cameras that are monitored by the internet. So anyone with an app and access to those feeds would be able to do follow-up due diligence when they have left the area, just in case those people came back and we'd be able to have them come rather than monitor as needed. And the other thing that we think is that if we have a camera in the beginning of the one point of access on the Flats, that we would have a fairly accurate record as to who is coming and going at any given time. So when things like today's eggings, for example, happen, we would have an idea of people who do not necessarily live on the Flats but are attending. So I can certainly pass that on to everyone on the board as needed. It's a three-page Word document. We also found out that there is a local consultant who would certainly know more than I would about these type of things and we could give you that contact information.
Thank you, Greg and Iris. Iris and Greg, do you want to try to work with two board members so we don't have to have a special meeting and we can actually have more meetings? Or do you want the full board to try to work with?
I'll just jump in, Iris, if you don't mind. I think starting with a smaller portion of the board is probably going to lead to some efficiencies. Make it easier to schedule things and as you said, Ben, avoid the need for something that is more formal as we're on our education curve and discussing. And then perhaps we can end that fact-finding information with a more formal meeting with the total board.
And I would like to jump in and, and I would like to jump in and ask if Ben, if you would be one of those two members?
I was going to suggest Bruce and Jill or Jane. Now I would be one of them, yes.
Okay, then I will I will accept that small meeting first and we can do what, where we go thereafter will be fine.
Yeah, I think, I think we could get more work done like Greg says. I think it would expedite things than putting notices in the paper, having another recess meeting and then a meeting after that. And, you know, I think this way we would work a little bit better. When are you looking to want to try to get together? Greg or Iris?
Probably want to say yesterday.
You're right. Well, when are you available? Are you available this weekend? Are you available Friday?
Thursdays and Fridays, Thursdays and Fridays are the bad days, but other than that, I can make myself available. And then whichever board member wishes to work with that, with me and you guys, that would be fine.
I could meet next Monday.
Monday's good.
Okay, let me just, I hope I don't disconnect Zoom, but my calendar is on my phone, so let me see if I can do that at the same time.
Goodbye, Iris.
No, I'm still there. Monday is the 14th, Monday is the 14th. And that's good for me.
What time?
Late morning or early afternoon would be good for me.
You don't have to make a time now. You, you guys get together, figure out what time's going to work for you and then where do you want to meet?
Early afternoon is good for me too. So if we say like 1 o'clock, does that work? Is that something that will work for you, Ben?
Oh yeah, that's fine. I know my boss.
Good. I'm sure she will.
And I'll be in Colorado and I have the wedding, so I'm not available until October for taking anything else on, sorry.
Bruce, are you back in school by then?
Yeah, I, I work.
Well, who does that leave?
Jane, are you available Monday at 1:00 PM?
I have a blank on Monday's space. It's just been filled in, 1 o'clock. Where will we be meeting?
Where would you like to meet Greg and Iris and whoever else from your group that you want to meet with? I mean, if it's a nice day, we can meet down in the park or we can meet anywhere that works. And you don't have to make it now. Would you, if you let us know?
Why don't we start by saying the park and if we need to go somewhere else, we can, but that certainly is a nice visual for some of the things we're going to be discussing.
Okay, I, I agree. 1 o'clock at the park.
I'm totally familiar with the, but a couple of people had hands up that might have wanted to add something.
Annie's phone, it looks like.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. I, I understand the concern for the crime and the speeding and the Flats and stuff, but surveillance cameras are actually it's like a that's a major legal and civil
And we haven't got there that far? We haven't got that far. It was just a suggestion.
Yeah, I know, but I don't think it's going to be legal to put surveillance cameras down there.
Well, that's something that I can work with, with the town attorney and bring to the table when we're there. I mean, this is like the very I mean, this is like the very first meeting before we get shooting off in the spots of, hey, we can't do that because of this, we can't do that because of that. I'd like to just meet with them, get the information down and then see where we can go from there. I have concerns about cameras also.
It's also a systemic issue in the town that there's no place for teenagers to feel like they belong anywhere. There's no skateboarding allowed in the parking lots. There's no youth center. So these kids are going nuts right now. And especially during COVID. And I feel like the harsh reactionary response is just going to fuel the fire. I think that there has to be some other level.
I agree with you to an extent, but when we find needles and we have drug activity, that's more than kids acting out because of COVID.
Yeah, it's been going on for a long time because the kids don't have anywhere to go and they're bored. And plus before COVID, there's no youth center and there's no, nothing going on in town to engage these teenagers in a positive direction.
And that can be something we can discuss with the group and what they want to do, but again, we've got a drug issue down there with needles in the playground. I'm not buying into that there are kids that are bored from COVID.
Do we know it's kids?
We don't. We're using the word kids. Yeah, we don't. Steve Stewart, you have a question?
I have a comment. So I don't know how far along the town is in their street lighting program with the LED improvements. But one of the functions of the LED improvements is to offer a camera option on the streetlights. And the flats has a lot of streetlights, so that would be one option if the town chooses to go with cameras to incorporate as this town moves ahead with the street lighting program.
Yeah, they've got some pretty neat things that those streetlights will do, that's for sure.
Oh yeah, they're really, really nice.
And the Powells?
Hi. Someone suggested at the first neighborhood watch meeting in the flats about chaining acts, not allowing access anymore to the turnaround at the very end of Delaware Drive. When we first started coming up, we were told that's a school bus turnaround. So it could not be blocked. Do you know if that's still the case? And I don't know whether blocking it would help with the drugs.
I don't know if that's still the case. We can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony.
Okay.
You're off mute.
I heard the comment about you kept using the generic phrase kids. The speeders are not kids because they're driving vehicles. They're not kids. Right? The ones that are out later and involved in some of the drug nonsense, not kids, not kids. So if it's a problem for kids that are, you know, feel bored and want to act out, there is a baseball field, maybe it's supply of baseball, okay? But after that, we still need to watch what's going on with this dangerous speeding and the drug issue. Okay, needles, et cetera. So let's not all put it right on kids. Let's use, maybe we use a different phrase and look towards a different avenue and see who needs to be targeted, you know, in terms of cleaning this mess up, all right? Just a comment, thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to move into our public comment section since we can continue this conversation with the flats and then if others have comments regarding anything else before we move into our closing items. 653. Phone ending in 653, did you have a question?
Can you hear me? Hello?
There you go.
Okay, great. Hi. About the flats, a number of us are wondering for non-911 emergencies. Are we better off calling the sheriff, the state police or the local barracks? There's just some concern and question over who actually do we call for non-emergency police matters?
You can contact either the sheriff's office or the state police. The state police does have a local number. It goes into a central dispatch. Same with the sheriff's department, they've got their own central dispatch.
Okay, and to your knowledge, does one or the other have a better response time? Or it just depends on the day?
It really depends on the day and how many patrols they have out and where they are. Unfortunately, being the rural area, the patrols are usually, the patrol areas are large.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll check with 911 for non-emergencies if they do that because they dispatch both the sheriff's department and the state police. Usually they'll do it on a closest car call, whereas the state police or the sheriff's department, if you call them, they're going to just send whatever car they've got regardless of where they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Tim. Ed's there, excuse me, hold on one second, Tim. 653 Ed, go ahead.
Oh yeah. Regarding the streetlights down here, there's a streetlight on Third Avenue and Fourth Street that works sporadically. Most of the time it's not on. So it's dark from there all the way down, you know, past the basketball court, pitch black, including, you know, the playground, the multi-generational park, the ball fields, your garden area, all that stuff. So, you know, I put a call into NISAC about the streetlight being out about two weeks ago, but of course now with the new lights going in, I don't know what's going to happen. But anyway, I would be of the opinion that it wouldn't be a bad idea to put another streetlight down there on Fourth Avenue. This is suggested.
Right. And kind of like Greg had also said, if we put one in there and put it on a motion so that it's not on all the time or dims and then it's like Steve said, there's a lot of things that these new lights can do. They can also dim to a certain point and then when activity is detected, it'll brighten back up. So we can certainly work on that.
Yeah, because I mean, it's just, it's just a black area. You can't, you can't see a thing there on a, on a dark night, you know? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Hi, everybody. I live on Second Avenue and Third Avenue directly behind the house in question, the bank-owned home. And I've been in touch with the, the mortgage company a couple of times, initially telling them what was happening and then some updates about the several break-ins which were suspected to come from the lawnmower. And I talked to Ty last week, gave him the information on the bank and he's going to try to call and see if we can get it locked up. They said they'd come and resecure the house but gave no timeline for that, even after I told them the events that had happened over the couple of weeks. But now he possesses all that contact information, so maybe he can get them to get out here faster to shut the house down.
Hard to begin.
While the presidential candidate disagree on many key issues, their ability to make sure.
Other questions or comments? Jen, I'm sorry.
Hi there, everybody. This is Jennifer Potato on Fourth Street. I just wanted to follow up to that comment about the teenagers because I don't want this to go in the wrong direction or spend time that may be not worth doing. But it doesn't feel like it's teenagers at all and the stories that we're hearing have nothing to do with teenagers. And as a parent of two teenagers, I know that they can be bored, but this is not the kind of trouble that they get into when they're bored. Sure, they could be doing mischievous things around town, but not that I'm aware of in any way, shape or form. And anything that's related to this group coming together is not about teenagers. I live on Fourth Street. There is this, we can track what's happening. There are, the same truck revs its engines and flies down this road every day. I believe it's almost every day. So it probably is every day. So it happened while this call was happening. So, and it's not a teenager. And there's activity, the same type of activity on the same streets to the same houses. The park is definitely an issue. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, the sense of where people are feeling this is coming from and it's, and it's not the teenagers. Yes, it'd be nice to give them something more to do, but I don't think that has anything at all to do with what's going on down here. So thank you all for like listening to us and hopefully we'll all come together and solve this problem. There are people that have addictions down here that are either from here or outside of here that need help and they need to not be bringing down our neighborhood and not subjecting our children or our dogs, everybody to activity that's dangerous. And hopefully we'll just get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
And this is Star, can you hear me?
Yes, Star.
Yeah, I'd like, I have a couple of questions, but first I'd like to know, it seems my video has been somehow turned off. And not that I necessarily need it to be, you know. Oh, here we go. Okay. All right, the two questions I had is, first of all.
Wait, now Star is muted. Star, you need to unmute yourself.
You had two questions, you said, Star.
Yes, yes. First is, do we, is there some way to get a hard copy of the agenda before the meeting takes place? I'm having a lot of difficulty following what's going on because someone is just arbitrarily moving it up and down with the conversation and I just.
I think this is going to probably be our last Zoom meeting. October, which I'll come in our closing comments. October 4th is the last that the governor has set for Zoom meetings. So more than likely, our next meeting is going to be in public. We will probably still Zoom it, but that's just for people that are uncomfortable coming in. But we have to be there, so.
Okay, well, that, that still doesn't answer the question about the agenda. You can get that before the meeting.
We can have it either posted on the website so that you can get it from there or emailed out.
Okay. And then the other question I had was on the elimination of records, supposedly unessential or non-valuable records. Who is making that decision?
The records officer would make that, which is a town clerk.
Okay, and that's, isn't that a little arbitrary? I mean, something might be relevant or necessary to maintain and if it's just one person that's, that's got the chopping block in hand, I think that that is a dangerous concentration of power.
There, if you see in there pursuant to Article 57A in the local governments, there is a whole list of what has to be kept. This goes into things like, I would like to say emails, but we actually have a server that captures all of them. So even if we delete our emails, they're captured on the server.
Okay, where can you get this A57 thing? That you can see which ones are considered non-touchable?
New York State local government records pursuant to Article, that would be Article 6.
Article 6?
You can, yeah. Why am I responding to your records keeper?
Hi, Star. It's more of the position of the town clerk and records.
I can't hear you, so I'm not sure what you're saying.
It doesn't show you're muted, but you're, we can't hear you, Crystal. Say something now. Nope.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Now I can hear myself echoing. It's part of elect someone that's going to be honest. It's the town clerk, records manager, officer, it's typically a town clerk. You have to follow guidelines put out by New York State. They used to be a hardcover book, which is very difficult to follow. So needless to say, I don't throw away very many records. We typically have regular bills that we can get rid of every seven to nine years, such as billing, all the town bills that you see that we pay, we have to hold those for nine years. So we have boxes and every year we get rid of one box that's nine years old. Certain things we have to keep for six months, certain things we keep for five years. But now with the new system that they have, it's, I haven't actually even tried it yet, but we can search electronically the item that we're looking at to get rid of. Most of our records are kept at least 10 years. I don't know if that really helps answer your question.
Well, it does in the sense that, you know, I can see getting rid of a 10-year-old water bill or electric bill. But when you start talking about legal and you have documentation of things, that's something I think, you know, can't just be summarily dismissed by one person's judgment.
Yeah, that's already covered by that and it specifically says in there about legal and financial.
Star, if I, if I could throw out something, I'm in a lot of trouble with the state legally, I can't do that.
I think, but you know, I, I am agreeing with Star that it, we also have a process to pay bills, but we have people review the bills. And I think all Star is saying, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she's saying, could we just have another person look and agree that it, the records that the clerk is saying can be destroyed should meet the criteria? Is that what you're saying, Star?
I think a second opinion would be excellent and I'm not even sure just a second opinion is enough, but.
Well, it's not really an opinion, it's just a double check, that's all.
As long as it doesn't, a second opinion or another opinion doesn't become a rubber stamp. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
I guess that the best thing for me to do would be to look up this New York State Article 6 and that the piece that was quoted, when I get the agenda, I can take that actual title out of it. Just look what they're talking about.
I think that that'll help you understand, you know, more about what can and cannot be disposed of. We still have stuff downstairs from the landfill. You know, that's never going to go away, that will be part, you know, it's legal stuff. Any, any, anything, any Article 78, any grant work that we've done, it's all retained.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jump in with one thought here, suggestion for another flats resident. On our block here, and I can only really speak to what happens on our street here, when the lights go down, everybody seems to go to bed and everybody turns off seemingly every light in their house. We've had a longstanding policy of leaving the porch lights on and we have motion detectors. And I realize that represents some expense for some folks. But if everybody in the neighborhood left at least one porch light on, that might help remedy the situation. Darkness is the best friend of anybody who's up to no good. And we kind of like are the lone beacon on this particular block. I don't know what's going on on the other streets, but if we made a more concerted effort to just leave a light on, that can go a long way to help. on, that can go a long way to helping discourage people who are prowling around to see what's going on.
Yeah, the same thing with timer lights, Mike, when you're not home. Are there any other questions before we go into closing items?
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Does anyone know the two arrests that were made, was that by the New York State Police?
I believe that they were New York State Police arrests. If you call the local barracks and talk to one of them, I think they would be able to help you.
Okay. And can someone speak on, is this a new issue, or has this been ongoing?
I think it's been in Iris or Greg or anybody from the flats. I think it's been an ongoing issue that has just kind of come to a head lately.
Yes, it has been ongoing, and it has just intensified. And it is... And so that's where those concerns have come to a point where we need to do something about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other comments before closing items? Okay. Board comments? Jill? No. Brucey? Jane? Unmute yourself.
I actually don't have any board comment this evening.
Okay. A meeting reminder for our next meeting. At this point, it looks like it will be a meeting live in the town hall, depending on what the restrictions are going to be. And I have talked with the town clerk. Crystal is talking about still running a Zoom meeting so that people can either call in or video in and have questions if they do feel uncomfortable coming into the town hall. If there's no other board comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
A motion by Jane to adjourn, a second?
Second.
A second by Jill. Bruce?
He's muted.
He's muted, but he's saying, yes, I can see it.
He's shaking his head.
Jane?
Yes.
Jill?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you, folks, for attending the meeting. It's one of our largest turnouts yet, so appreciate that. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.